All right. Now, like all this city council order. We do have one time on the end of this evening. It is a discussion on the 2022 budget. And it has to do with capital and supplemental requests. Now, I'm going to go to Laura Smith.
Hey, Mayor. Good evening, Council. As Mayor Wobbs, one of the things that we have looked at preliminarily in our budget conversations thus far have been capital and supplemental requests related to the 2021, 2022 budget. So we wanted to come back this evening to be prepared for creating a final recommended budget through the September 1st Finance Administration Committee to have an opportunity to give a little bit of detail. To kind of make sure that potentially the staff recommendations are aligned appropriately with council priorities. So I do have a presentation. I put several new handouts. I will place this evening, one is the presentation that we'll look at this evening. The second is the updated general fund summary. I would just kind of go to the page in the budget each year from my perspective. It does relate to the general fund and then updated capital and supplemental requests with some additional changes. Councilman, or problem, even one community center feasibility study. And I spelled it almost wrong. Off of the list after our last discussion. So we'll take some time to kind of walk through these. I've got some slides to share with you. And there's some rationale is actually things that can get very, excuse me, positive correction since June in our last conversation, July in our last conversation around this. And we'll walk through kind of some of the adjustments for recommendations that will lead to particularly 2021 revised estimates for where we will then this year. Which will have a positive impact on the bottom line of the share and for that year. And then obviously, in the discussions, questions are the priorities that we want. So we'll leave them with this part. So we here. Capital supplemental request forward through the other process of right. Each department is tasked with looking at their business decisions. They need to address this. Well, naming supplemental requests appropriately. And those are considering. So we go through the line I had such a complete opportunity department. And they also report forward from council where they, and those may come from things like the direction. Should I go this way? Retreat or the whole set number of things for other areas. So the supplemental and capital requests may be tied to certain council board executives. Or they may be identified as not leads or needs or in some cases they are.
They can't hear.
So we try to keep supplemental requests maintain very clearly the last conversation. So definitely not adding things and subtracting things on the budget. This little year. So we really do try to focus on those primarily as part of the same location session. And so I have maybe recommended both the collect this little year and the one that we're doing. The part this year about the finding that either the revenues change or subtract or percentage of the either requirements to back or modify some capital and supplemental items. That group has a priority. Or even as the way you probably don't really know. But maybe these things.
Next slide, please. Okay, and I'm. Let me just. Off of this slide a little bit. Okay, so this slide is really hard to see in the presentation, but this is this general fund summary that I put at your place this evening. And so you'll recall what this gives us is kind of a snapshot of the last several years in terms of budget actuals. So we're looking at actual revenues and expenses from 2019, 2020, and 2021. The highlighted orange column is the year end estimate for 2021. So that's as we move through this budget process, we look at changes year to date, both on the revenue and the expense side, and we adjust that. So we take advantage of savings or increases in revenues, or we adjust again if we're seeing decreases. And then we have our 2022 budget column. So based on the look that we've been working on for the last couple of weeks, our estimated excess fund balance, which is really where our focus goes in this case, as it relates to the capital and supplemental requests. Because you'll remember that none of those were actually shown previously in this base, this base budget. So we go immediately to that bottom line to think about how it's going to be impacted as we potentially add or implement these additional requests. So we're going to focus first on the general fund, and then we do have several other capital and supplemental requests that impact some of our other funds. But this is certainly where we'll spend the majority of our time this evening. So estimated excess fund balance at 123121 from our conversations in July has increased by $439,200. And the estimated, and so then correspondingly, the estimated excess fund balance at 123122 has increased by $285,623. So good news, moving that excess fund balance in a positive direction. And so next slide, I'll kind of walk through some of the assumptions and things that have changed since July. Next slide, please. I can do that. But no, I'm good. I can do that. I can do it. Move it from here. Uh huh. I didn't think I could, but I can. Okay, so what has changed? As we know, and we've been talking about for the last several months, sales tax performance, both sales and primarily use tax is outperforming even our budget estimates in 2021. So we've increased slightly because taking advantage of every penny that we can in the budget is important. Sales tax revenues, both in the 2021 year and estimated and 2022, based on the performance year to date. We'll continue to monitor that. And really, that was a look at moving from about an expected increase of one and a half percent to 2%. So we're not talking big jumps in those cases. We still think, I still think those are very conservative. One of the other things that we have the advantage of having information about that we didn't a couple of months ago is the performance at our outdoor pool and the performance at our summer camp program. So both on the revenue and the expense side, I've been able to go back in and make adjustments to that budget to reflect where we are. Both performed very well, both in terms of revenues and expenses. You're going to see at your September meeting, a short presentation, both by our aquatics manager and our program supervisor about those year end, but both the pool, I think, what was it, Penn 82%? 82% cost recovery for this season, which is absolutely unheard of for an outdoor pool. And that's driven primarily because the fact that we went, ran our operations with a very lean staffing number. So we didn't have the number of staff that we typically have. But we were able, that's not a number that we will continue into 2022, but it certainly has been a boost in the 2021 estimated. And summer camp, the same, even though we reduced the number of campers back from 180 to 100. I also have gone in, so not only increases to impact that bottom line, but part of our conversations have been that perhaps the estimates for revenue recovery at the community center in 2022 were overly optimistic. So we've gone back in and reduced revenues at the community center by about $280,000 to bring that more in line. So you'll see it's just a slight increase over where we think we will finish this year. And probably the biggest impact to this was that we took another look. So when we first put the budget together, we look at where we think we're going to be in terms of estimated personnel costs, because those are the largest portion of our general fund budget and the biggest driver of expenses at well over 60%. But we now have the opportunity with seven months of the year recorded and in the books and some sense of positions that are currently vacant, that we anticipate may be vacant for the next several months or through the end of the year. As we work to get those filled, we've updated estimated personnel costs at year end as well. So those are the things that are contributing to the increases in that bottom line that you see in this revised general fund summary. Okay, well, I was optimistic. I got to move it. There we go. Thank you. So now I'd like to just take a moment to run through and review the current requests that were submitted for the 2021 and 2022 budgets before we jump ahead and look at programming those and their impacts to the actual bottom lines in the budget. So again, an updated handout is at your place. It's the one with the yellow highlights on the front cover. And then there's a summary of each of those items included as well. So just to very quickly recap, from administration, we had included an upgrade to our access card reader, security camera system, actually not an upgrade for the access card reader. It's a system that is sort of limping along currently. And that is the proxy cards that allow us to move safely into and around in our facilities. We included a request for consulting for implementation of our financial management software. That's something that's been budgeted for several years. And because of other priorities, primarily development projects and municipal court software in the last couple of years, it's kind of gotten pushed to the back burner. But trying to move that this project across the finish line and the next year to year and a half is an important priority for us. There's money budgeted for classification and compensation system updates. I think you're all familiar with that. Again, in September, we would be bringing back kind of that formal recommendation that you would would consider and potentially approve so that we could begin to implement that in 2021. A server and switch replacement. This is a reduction from what was included in your packet. We realized we had duplicated the police server in this budget request as well. So it was reduced from $39,000 to $24,000 to be reflective of just the four switches that will be replaced as a part of that project. Replacement of 15 laptop computers in the community development department, a comprehensive zoning code update. In the Parks and Recreation Department, additional marketing and PR materials. The addition you see there of the community center feasibility study, which we discussed to look at the, and make recommendations related to the long-term sustainability and viability of operations within this facility. On the police department, you see that server replacement Xed out. Even prior to us realizing it was duplicated above in the administration request. In the implementation of our municipal court software, we've encountered some security, security and access issues for the consultants in terms of ongoing maintenance and implementation. And so we've transitioned that program from a server that was originally purchased as a part of that to the cloud environment. And we had already purchased the server, so that server will be used to replace the one due for replacement in the police department. An expansion of the co-responder, mental health co-responder program to add a second mental health co-responder shared primarily by the cities of Mission and Merriam, who are the primary users of those services. Reclassification of a computer information specialist in the police department to assist with report compilation, report preparation, kind of making sure that a lot of the new systems and tools that we've put in place for the department over the last couple of years are effectively integrated. That was intended, the time the budget was originally presented to be a position reclassification. And that individual has, will be leaving the organization at the end of August. And so we'll be looking at, we've left it in, we think it's still very critical in support of the police department's operations, but we will be out recruiting for that position. And so this is again, just the additional to transition. There will also be some component to support the Microsoft Office 365 installation that we have gone through this last year, which was something that this other individual was doing as well. Replacement of one admin and investigations vehicle in the police department. Replacement of a single axle dump trunk in Public Works, along with a tandem compaction roller, a heavy equipment trailer, a Ford F-250 pickup, and an automatic gate at the Public Works facility. The kind of city council, other considerations that were originally submitted with the capital and supplemental requests included dog park improvements. And you'll note here that this is not specific to any location. This would just be an earmark of excess general fund reserves to advance the dog park conversation. Reserve for dark store considerations, which we had some conversation around in our last meeting suggesting that perhaps we not specifically call out a reserve for that, but to allow that to be carried in our 25% general fund fund balance reserves that are in accordance with city council policy. But again, can revisit that. Mission market site improvements. New streetlight pole banners, ride KC dockless e-bikes. There are a couple of things on here that we submitted because it's important for us to start to get them on our radar screen and make sure that we're tracking them going forward. And that is a redo of the parking lots around City Hall and the police department, as well as a redo of the trash dumpster that is shared and the trash enclosure that is shared at City Hall and the Mission Family Aquatic Center. Neither one of those were assigned a specific priority through this budget process, or nor will you see them included in the recommendations for funding in 2021 or 22. And then finally, the development of an ADA compliance plan. And I think as Celia presented several weeks ago, this is an important document for us to have. It will be something that we continue to work on and develop. But this will help really sort of guide our decisions and our investments as we make ADA upgrades to our facilities, whether those are buildings or streets or parks. So that's kind of the quick overview. I'm happy to stop here if anyone has any questions about specifics, or we can go ahead and sort of move into the bottom line impacts and say that, whatever your preference is.
Yeah, I just have one question about the parking lot and other items that weren't recommended, but also aren't in the parking lot. I was thinking specifically about the comprehensive zoning code update and just making sure we're, you know, staying on top of that, coming out of the comprehensive plan. And so I guess I was wondering, will there be a separate parking lot for the non asset items?
As we get through the slides, there'll be a separate parking lot for a couple of those items that aren't currently shown as recommended. Okay, next slide, please. Okay. This gets a little. There's no good way I learned today in trying to put this presentation together, really. I need string and some text on a board almost to kind of help connect the dots. So what I've tried to do, so if you have your general fund summary page here, what I've tried to do is take the 2021 estimated and that bottom portion and adjust it so that we can very clearly see the impacts of each one of these capital and supplemental requests as proposed or recommended. So you'll see as it matches up with your general fund summary, the estimated ending fund balance overall for 2021 is $5.2 million. Of that $5.2 million, we restrict 25% or the equivalent of 25% of annual general fund revenues to comply with the council's actual fund balance policy. And then we, if there are other things that are being carried in that overall fund balance that are committed or restricted in some fashion, we identify those as well. Currently, we have $434,404 and committed and assigned. $250,000 of that are the revenues that we've received in accordance with the EPC redevelopment agreement that tentatively, we've had conversations around using some of those funds to upgrade parking in the downtown district, but council still needs to have a comprehensive discussion about that. And then the balance of those funds is reflective of ADA fees that have been collected through our municipal court system for the last several years and are earmarked specifically for ADA improvements or projects. So those things that are restricted or committed already total 3.6 million of that 5.2, leaving us with what we refer to as the excess general fund fund balance of about $1.6 million. So it's just, I think, important to note here, you're all familiar, but both for the public perspective and always a good reminder that we haven't always had the luxury of carrying excess general fund fund balance. That's something that we've consciously built up over the last several years. In part, as we were looking at sort of managing some unknowns, whether that be transportation utility fee litigation or other swings and dips in the economy. So I think we're now to that point, and as we know, and we've had several conversations, that excess fund balance really aided us in being able to not, not to make rash or reactive decisions in the 2020 budget or in this 2021 budget in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. So that has been an equalizer absolutely for us for the last several years. And it has allowed us not to have to dip into that 25% fund balance policy. So as we think about, you know, moving, I think clearly we're not out of the, seeing the impacts of the pandemic and some other things. And so we're still conservative in our approach to making recommendations around the use of excess fund balance. But in 2021, based on the list that we reviewed previously, staff would recommend the access card reader, reader replacement and then upgrade for our security camera systems of $45,000. Implementation of the classification and compensation recommendations at $150,000, that has an asterisk, which we'll get on to in another slide. The community center feasibility study, we think if we're going to do that, let's get that, try to get that kicked off this year. And then the ADA compliance plan. So both the community center feasibility study and the ADA compliance plans are things that will be done by outside consultants. So those are not projects that would take away significant staff capacity, time, or resources in this current year. So all told, those total $265,000. But if you go back up to the top, you see that, that, as I mentioned, the ADA compliance plan would come out of those ADA funds that are committed or restricted. And so you'll see a reduction of that $434,000 to $404,000. And then the balance of that 265 is shown as the 235, so leaving us going into 2022 with an estimated excess fund balance of almost $1.4 million. Then as we move into 2022, and so the numbers, the beginning number doesn't match on your general fund summary and here, and that is because we're showing that reduction or we're showing the implementation and the addition of those recommended capital and supplemental items in 2021. So I didn't show them on this sheet and wanted you to see that clean look at the revisions to the budget. And then we'll move through this look. So we start estimated ending fund balance in 2022 is just over $5 million. Again, we hold on to that 25% fund balance. You see again, the reduction in the committed and assigned funds, and that is the reduction for the ADA compliance plan, leaving then an excess general fund balance of about 1.3 million. So recommended for 2022 would be consulting for implementation of the financial management software at $40,000. Replacement of the four switches at $24,000. Replacement of 15 laptop computers for $29,000. Additional Parks and Recreation PR materials for $18,650. Again, I would say that may be one that could be impacted by the results of a community center feasibility study, depending on who we might identify as target audiences. Because this is primarily additional printing and mailing costs of activity guides. You see that computer information specialist position in the police department, the upgrade or reclassification of that. The heavy equipment trailer for the Public Works Department at $14,000, and then that earmark for dog park improvements at $200,000. So the total recommended at this time for 2022 and what we would recommend showing in the budget that is presented on September 1st would total $345,650, and that would bring the excess general fund fund balance down to about $960,000. So still carrying almost a million dollars in excess general fund fund balance. But trying to take advantage of that to continue to advance some of these projects. So I think let's go, any questions here?
I was wondering if the tandem compacter roller has any impact on our paving program for residential streets and whether that should be also prioritized for next year.
So you'll see that is prioritized, that's in a separate fund. So right now, this is the focus on the general fund. And on the next slide, absolutely, that roller is recommended, but out of our equipment reserve and replacement fund.
I just had a quick question. I appreciate the clarification on the dog park, that it is not geographic specific. We don't have a park designed for it or anything of that nature. I did want to understand better on the $200,000 earmark. Will we, in a later time, get a better definition of the percent of staff time, the time for maintenance, the time for materials, and a breakdown of what that 200,000 is, like staff time over a year, over three years, over five years? That would be helpful for me.
Yes, and I'll kind of take a quick detour here to kind of outline where we think the overall outdoor park improvement conversation is and should be going here in the next probably 30 to 45 days. So as you know, we've done conceptual planning at Mohawk Park. We've been through, so that's been through two public meetings. And we're waiting, still waiting on notification of grant funding. But we have included in the five-year CIP for Parks and Recreation, the construction of both the restrooms and the pavilion, which has been classified in that conceptual plan as 1A, is included in the budget and spent with Parks and Recreation Sales Tax Dollars that was presented to you in July as a part of that CIP. Broadmoor Park went through the conceptual planning process, has gone through one neighborhood meeting. The challenge there is the stakeholder group has lost a significant number of its members. So typically, what we would do is we would bring the feedback from that public meeting back to the stakeholder group. And then they would make some adjustments, and then we would have that second meeting. Where I'm not sure that that makes sense based on kind of what's happened with the stakeholder group. That conversation may just need to come back to kind of the larger community as we look at all of our park improvements. Waterworks Park, the conceptual plans are done. It's the stakeholder group met, has met twice, and they've scheduled the public, the first public meeting to present those improvements on September 7th. And so really, we're kind of, I think, to that point where we have enough of those conceptual plans, at least ideas and concepts alongside the results from our Direction Finder survey, which we know outlined and kind of helped provide, I think, some. which we know outlined and kind of helped provide, I think, some, some clarity or some direction around preferred improvements. But also have carried a very strong message about maintaining the amenities that we have in our park system. And I think all of those things need to be brought back together. Ideally in a work session, I think we would target with the council's support towards the end of September to really look at our entire park network and start to have that more comprehensive conversation as we try to move forward if we're tentatively going to, to look at renewal of that Parks and Recreation Sales Tax in April or May of 2022.
Laura, I think it's also important to remember that just because something, a piece of equipment or a line item gets into a budget, does not mean that's approval to spend. Each of these items will come before council, if it's in the budget, will come before council individually.
Yes.
There will be discussion on each of these items when the time is appropriate and decision will be made whether to spend or not at that time.
Yes, and, and council member to your, to your point as well. As we look at those amenities that are included in this budget and next year's budget, we need to have that, that larger conversation about what it's going to take to maintain those, not only maintain the new improvements, but to maintain the things that we have as well. So that will come back in a, in a much more comprehensive fashion.
Mr. Ray? Yeah, I had a question about the ARPA funds. Because I think when we've talked about it before, there's both an allocation deadline and then a spend deadline. So I was wondering if you could refresh us on those deadlines. And then my second part of my question was, does putting it in our general fund fund balance as revenue replacement count as our sort of committed allocation? Or after the budget process, can we still change what we want to do with that money potentially?
I, I think we're well within any timeframes for any of the allocation and certainly well within the timeframe for any expenditure of that fund. There's a very specific model for how you calculate the revenue replacement. We have not run that, that model yet because we've been focused on this budget process. But we've got those funds identified, and as you can see, in, in neither case, in what we've presented this evening, would we be spending that ARPA allocation, which is about $751,000 in each year. So technically, when you get to the projected bottom line in both budgets, you know, that would still be there. So our hope is to get this budget wrapped up. We will come back and evaluate kind of all those nuances of allocation. And we know we have to have funds expended by this December of 2024.
Okay, that, that was what I wanted to clarify was that if, by putting it in the general fund balance, if that counted as our allocation or if there was a further process, it sounds like there's a further process, so.
I believe so.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, next slide, please. Okay, so also then, the, the things that we've been discussing, as I mentioned, impact our general fund. There are several other projects totaling or, or things totaling about $394,000 that impact other funds outside of the general fund. The first that is recommended for 2022 is expansion of the co-responder program. Again, as I mentioned, that is a hiring of a second mental health co-responder using special alcohol, special alcohol funds in the amount of $50,000. There is, there is an alcohol fund fund balance that has been building up. We traditionally have spent, a portion of those funds have to go to, or go to the prevention treatment of drug and alcoholism. We work with United Community Services and their Drug and Alcohol Council to allocate typically about $50,000 each year, between $30,000 and $50,000 to go to their grant program. We allocate some portion of that to our DARE program. And then currently in the 2021 budget, we've allocated about $30,000 for the mental health co-responder program. So this would be an increase in an additional $50,000, so a total of $80,000 in 2022 going to the mental health co-responder program. Replacement of the police department's investigative admin vehicle, the Public Works Dump Truck, the tandem compaction roller and the Public Works Pickup Truck, all in our Equipment Reserve and Replacement Fund, which is where we've built up funds over the last several years, which helped to relieve some of the pressure for these big pieces of equipment when they need to be acquired and they don't put as much pressure on general fund operations. Market site improvements and the street pole banners are recommended to be funded from the Mission Convention and Visitors Bureau Fund. That is transient guest tax that is collected from our one hotel here in Mission. And the revenues are used primarily to support the printing and distribution of the Mission Magazine five times a year. But there, again, are some excess funds. There are some limitations, those funds can really only be used to help attract and retain visitors to kind of shop and eat and, and play in our community. So other considerations, one of the things, and I haven't assigned the number to it yet, but my goal is to bring that back to you in September. I think one of the things that you've heard us talk about and you can't go anywhere and, and not hear people talk about this is the challenges again, that we're all facing in terms of recruiting and retaining qualified staff. And that is really top to bottom. We've seen it in our part-time seasonal staff, whether those have been lifeguards. We're seeing it in our police department, but it's really starting to have a much broader ripple effect throughout the organization. So I think that one of the things that I'm working on is a look at some additional adjustments to that classification and compensation recommendation to try to position us more appropriately, because what we know is what happens in this cycle is all of the cities are competing, all of the cities are raising their salary ranges. All of the cities are raising their merit increase pools, and so you're constantly sort of chasing all of that. So again, we would bring that back potentially spreading the impacts of that out over multiple years. And then if the budget estimates that we've suggested hold through the end of this year, then we would recommend that the council allow us to bring back a recommendation to revise the budget to include the zoning code update. So not, the primary driver at this point is we really need to have our planner in place to effectively work through and complete that, that project. As you know, our planner's position is currently vacant. So until we could get that position filled and get that person here and acclimated, we felt it was appropriate to delay that budget request slightly. And then the automatic gate at Public Works, which is a very, very high priority of Celia. And in fact, late this afternoon, as, as staff was talking about this earlier this week, she said, if, if we can find a way in the budget to try to come up with this and cover the cost of that gate, is that something that you would consider presenting tonight as a part of those supplemental requests? And so she, at the 11th hour, got her, her rationale in, so thank you. But she's taken a look at the, the Public Works line item budget, and she believes that they can actually find the money to do this automatic gate and budget savings that they might have for the balance of this year. So we could approach that in two different ways. We could, you, you could give us some direction if you're comfortable moving forward with that now. Or if you would like for us to continue to kind of wait and see if those estimates hold through the end of the year and then authorize it shortly after the first of the year. And I think that is the last slide. Emily, could you? Yep.
Yeah, so if we were to go ahead and authorize the Public Works Gate today, would that construction start next few weeks or?
I don't know, how quickly do you think they can? Not weeks, but you'd start. Yeah, they have a budget estimate, so they would have to go get some bids that they would then hold for that period of time.
Would the line item budget estimates to cover that come back to us at our September meeting? As our next budget consideration or?
We could, we could absolutely look at that. If you want us to put together kind of a tighter budget around that, we can include that at the September. I mean, Celia's identified. I, I think she believes there are savings in the traffic signal budget and the streetlight budget primarily.
Yeah, I mean, it seems reasonable to me. If it's a high priority, it's a relatively low spend, especially if we think there's money somewhere else to cover it.
And I think from what I've heard her describe, it, it's a busier place than what you might imagine. She sits with her window looking out the front and just from a security standpoint, oftentimes she may be, or she, Kathy or Brent may be the only ones in the building as the crews are out on the street. So it just kind of provides an additional layer of security for our staff.
Just a quick comment regarding our staffing issue overall. And as we have the vacancy for the planner and additional vacancies, I would really appreciate at the end of the interview or somewhere during it, after, when you do a report out, if we have an idea, if people have given feedback about our salary ranges, pro, con and otherwise.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Got a question on the mental health co-responder program. Really excited to see this on the 2022 line item, and I think it's going to be really exciting and valuable. Do you get the sense if it's successful, which I don't see any reason it wouldn't be, that it'd be a recurring item for subsequent years? Or would this be something we would permanently kind of build into the special alcohol fund? If you could just kind of speak more towards post 2022 on that.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think the council has complete discretion on that. And so you would certainly have the opportunity if the alcohol fund performance wouldn't, you know, wouldn't support that. But I would imagine based on the statistics that the chiefs shared in the last go around with nearly, I think it was 10% of our calls currently, having some mental health component associated with them. I don't see the need decreasing. And I think, you know, you all, through that presentation, I've, I've heard you talk about the value that you see there. So I would see that be something that would continue. And I don't, the chiefs probably, that was that a thumbs up that I missed from the back? Okay.
Thanks. I just wanted to share my support for the zoning code update. I think we've heard from Brian extensively over the past couple of years for the need of that and especially in conjunction with the comprehensive plan. So I'm open to prioritizing that sooner rather than later. Second, I'm hoping that, as I mentioned, I think in our last conversation, that the market site improvements, that we could find some additional dollars to add some trees, natural shading elements without making a major investment, something that can provide some shade for folks when, when they're down there at the market, not wait on getting those trees in.
Yep, I will say currently we have a campaign that the PRT has launched to encourage the purchase of trees for planting at the market site. And I think Emily is working or plans to work with an arborist to identify species and location for those. And we do have funds available, I don't remember how many trees we said, three-ish, that the city will, will cover the planting for, but we're really promoting that as part of our 70 trees in our 70th year to try to help kickstart some of that natural shade at the market site.
Going back to the gate, I was wondering if that also impacts the winter when you've got snowplows and so forth. If this could be done before the winter, I think that that would be beneficial for that purpose as well.
We can try, absolutely, yeah. I mean, there's a lot more activity comings and goings at all hours of the day and night, right, with, with snow plowing operations. So it sounds as if staff needs to kind of shore up. The firm bids would bring those back to the council. And as we talked about it this week, there's also a, a wiring component. So as we do the security access camera upgrades, part of that will be extended or incorporated. And the plan is, even if we don't install the gate right out of the get-go, that we would get the wiring there to allow for the installation of the security camera as well.
Just to follow up, going through the list that you had originally, the ones that are not spoken for yet are the reserve for the dark store considerations, which you think would be taken care of our, with our contingency list. The.
The dockless e-bikes.
Right, the dockless e-bikes. And.
And then the parking lot and the trash dumpster, which we, the, again, those are really just shown as placeholders. So really the things that didn't get funded, you're absolutely right. So the reserve for the dark store considerations and the dockless e-bikes.
But you're suggesting that that contingents, contingency for the, the dark store should be built into the regular contingency.
That's the, that's what I heard the council express at one of the recent meetings. So I, I think that's, I, I think that's a reasonable approach at this time, based on the amount that has been communicated to us. I think what we need to do is make sure that we're sensitive as the litigation continues and that number continues to grow, that we can, that we make it a part of our ongoing conversations because there may be a point in time at which the litigation is not yet settled. And that number could be large enough to, you know, create more of a dent or, or a challenge in an annual operating budget. So I don't think we want to lose sight of it, but I do think at, at this point in time, it's probably appropriate.
Yeah, I just wanted to hop back to the, if, if we can, hop back to the general fund really quick and make sure I'm understanding the, the 2021 estimated about 1.4 ending fund balance. That includes the 750 from ARPA funds.
Yes, so if you go on, on this general fund summary, if you look at the very bottom revenue line into the transfer in, and that is entirely ARPA funding, both in 2021 and 2022.
So 2022, the 959, does that include the second 750 we anticipate getting or not yet?
It, it does. So you'll see in, in, again, on this general fund summary, you'll see that 751 as a transfer in. So it is impacting your bottom line numbers in both of those estimates.
And so I think my next question would be, is there staff capacity or interest in, you know, us sitting on, you know, nearly a million dollars in excess fund balance? And as we've had the question poised us prior to the budget process of, you know, if we could do whatever we wanted with this excess fund balance, what would we do? I mean, is there staff interest and capacity to spend beyond what we're looking at right here? Or are you recommending that we continue to have that stay where it is for now?
I think our recommendation, I mean, obviously you would dip into that for another $100,000 and some change with the zoning code update. So we do, we do believe that that is an important component, particularly as we move forward with potential additional redevelopment throughout the community. That's something that will, will pay dividends well into the future. I, I would say until we get through the end of this year and into next year to really have an understanding of the COVID impacts on primarily community center revenues, until we look at that community center feasibility study and start to have a plan for that. I think it's important for us to probably hold. You know, I'm conservative, so I would, I would put the brakes on at that number at this point and kind of watch and, and see what's happening. Because I think there are a couple of things, and if things get better, I think there are number things, a number of things included in the Direction Finder survey, which we haven't addressed in this, that I think would be appropriate, whether that is maintenance staff or additional dollars to be spent on the street program. You know, we've had conversations around streets being collectively your number one priority for, for the last several years. So I think there's an opportunity to really revisit that, that number and, and before we would spend any additional portion of that.
Just one final comment, I, I haven't been shy about wanting to see our ARPA dollars go directly to infrastructure projects, but understanding what's going on at the community center. I understand that's not necessarily possible, but I, and you and Penn have done a great job of laying out the community center cost recovery pieces for us over the past five years and how that's constantly changing. But I think with the ARPA funds now being in. But I think with the ARPA funds now being into play, being able to, you know, actively track those and how they're impacting our fund balance will be so helpful. So we can have a real act, especially with the feasibility study. So we can have a really accurate picture of how much the community center is impacting that fund balance for the next year or two. Thanks, Laura. Yeah, I just wanted to second what Hillary said on the priority on infrastructure, including with the ARPA funds. And if we could revisit that, I guess, maybe in Q1 of next year, when we see those end-of-year revenue numbers. In particular, you know, since we're not earmarking the 275,000 for the dark store theory, you know, is there some flexibility to allocate additional funds to residential streets? Which I think, you know, in our CIP program, we're planning for 1 million in the 2022 budget and then 2 million in the out years. You know, can we get that number up a little for 2022?
I don't think so. I think if you're comfortable with sort of the priorities that we've laid out, we'll wrap those, obviously you'll have another opportunity to touch the budget on September 1st, but we'll build these into the bottom line and build that final document that really more clearly communicates the overall picture.
All right then, seeing no more discussion, I would adjourn this work session.